This is our first time with... Okay, this is our first time with this camera equipment. If I can't hear myself. Okay, got it, thanks. I'm sorry, your name is? James. Thank you, James. The Kalani Eki Kuleo April Board Meeting is now in full swing. Let's see. Do I have to read any of this? No. Alright. Let's start with our city-state monthly reports. The three minute, minimum, three minutes maximum per department. First up, we have the Honolulu Fire Department. I don't see them. Okay, let's move on. Honolulu Police Department. How about the Board of Water Supply? Board of Water Supply? There we go.
Hi. Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Gimmoto from the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. I would like to share my monthly report. So for this month, there was a one water main break. It was on March 14th. It was a 12-inch cast iron and the address was 1596 Ihilawa Loop. Tonight's general water announcements. The topic is Detective Leak Week from April 14th to the 20th. It's time to chase down and repair those pesky leaks. The BWS has once again partnered with Hardware Hawaii for the annual Detective Leak Week campaign from Sunday, April 14th through Saturday, April 20th. This campaign is an annual reminder to check your plumbing fixtures and irrigation systems for leaks. One of the most common leaks is a leaky toilet, which is usually caused by a worn-out or faulty flapper. Learn more about our leak detection and win prizes at our in-person event on Wednesday, April 17th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. at Tamarind Park Bishop Square in downtown Honolulu. You can find out more information on our website at www boardofwatersupply.com. Stand up my report to see if you have any questions or comments for BWS.
Any questions or comments for Board of Water Supply? Okay. Thank you, thank you, Christopher.
Alright, hello, everyone.
Okay, let's circle back with the Honolulu Fire Department. Nope. And also HPGs also not. Okay. Alright, moving on. Board business. We have vacancies in sub-districts 1, 2, 5, 6, and 7. Is that what? Don't have a quorum. So, one of the things that I'm hoping will take up next month, because it's not on our agenda, is perhaps reducing the size of the board from 17. That is more than most boards have. And then the quorum issue wouldn't be so troublesome. Does anybody have anything to say about that? No? Okay. Approval of regular minutes, meeting minutes? Well, we can't do that. We can't do the watershed management plan. Right. So, does anybody want to discuss the East Honolulu Watershed Management Plan? Okay, great, thanks. And can you say your name for the record? Not yet. Okay. Next item is the Kalani High School track construction, dust mitigation, and stone well. So, we have members of... Sure. Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm glad the community is here tonight. We're here because we're hoping to get a fencing around the school project, which is down... It's down in the, it's in the middle of Kalani Eki Valley, surrounded on four sides by residents. It's got Kalani Eki residents on Kalani Eki Street who are totally unbuffered from the effects. And Kalani Eki Estates in the back who are not as affected by the dirt, but they, I'm sure, hear the sound. And Kalani Eki, Wailei Eki Ridge, actually. Here's one map that shows you that's Kalani Eki Street. Wailei Eki Ridge is up here, excuse, right here. Eki Place is within the Wailei Golf Course subdivision, and the Wailei Golf Course subdivision is here. And Kalani High School Track is right there. And we all kind of got built at the same time, but the problem is when a project is being built in that area, we're downwind of a very windy valley, and the dirt is going everywhere. The sound is bouncing off all the mountainsides, and the dirt is going inside of our homes. I'm going to show you how much dirt I got just in one area. That was one sweep in five square feet. That is the, that's the dirt I got from one sweep. Then there were two more over there, and it's this fine, silty clay soil, which is how it's described in the contract. And it has to all be taken away because they said they could not build a new track on top of it. So what we, and here's another picture of the job site. So we need a fencing, a dust grain fencing around the project. Thank you, my sister. Because we're having no protection from the winds that are bouncing around. And here we have... Sorry. Well, I want the audience to see this. These are from swipes of the car. These, I just took these this afternoon, these swipes here. This is all dirt. That was just one swipe on one little table, and that was on two or three square feet. That was on one and a half square feet of dirt. These are the trucks. Whenever the excavator, whenever the excavator digs up and puts into the hauling truck, what's not being protected is when he dumps into the truck, there's no hosing, which is what's supposed to happen, and that dirt just blows. You can see some dirt dust here, and these are the sized trucks, they're huge trucks. This is Wailei Eki Valley Ridge, Wailei Eki Ridge. And the problem for us is that it's fine particulate matter. It's the kind of dirt that goes deep into your lungs. I know we have some doctors in the room. Goes deep into the lungs. It's worse than regular dirt. It goes inside, and it's the kind that does the most damage. And I don't know, it's... Here's a picture of a table in our back. I'm going to pass that around. So, we don't have quorum, so we can't pass the rest. I've had a resolution, but we don't have quorum. But because the community is here, I'd like to see, have them get up and share their concerns of what they've noticed. The other problem is, when this blows over, it also goes on all their new solar panels. And I'm going to have to pay someone to come and get the crust off. And that's expensive, and it's, you know, it's a problem. And it shouldn't have to happen. And I was standing out on the street corner, Kalani Ali Highway, at the corner of YLA, talking to a civil, excuse me, an electrical engineer for the state who's doing a project with the traffic lights in about a year. And he and I were standing out there talking about the specs and where things are going to be. And we were looking over at the school because there's a box over there, conduit box. And as we looked over there, a dust storm came up. It was, it was over 30 feet tall because it was taller than our homes, coming up over the project. There were no water trucks hosing it down, and that went up to Kalani Eki, then it blew down on us. And our neighbors, my, one of my neighbors right there, we were out hanging on his fence chatting, and his workmen were there, and a huge cloud came over, inundated us, got in our eyes, our ears, our, everything. Then the guys yelled out, "Hey, what are you going to call OSHA? What's going on here? What are these guys doing? You know, this is not safe." They were furious. So, that's a problem. So I'd like our community to get up and share their concerns because they have made the effort to come here tonight. Thank you. So, the, the, the community members that are here to discuss this, can you step up to the mic? State your name, please.
Hi, my name is Daniel Suzuki. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time. I live across from Kalani High School, where the project is taking place. And what Sherry put up on the wall looks eerily common to what I see. So, prior to the project, I used to, I cleaned the house, very proud of it. So I vacuum and I mop. And it used to be once a week, and I was very proud of it. And I do, I would vacuum and mop the entire house because my two children, who couldn't make it today, they have very severe allergies, particularly to dust. And so they, because I, I clean regularly, and we also have air purifiers, they haven't had to take their allergy medication for quite some time. So we're very pleased, my wife and myself. So, what we noticed, unfortunately, is once the project started, instead of once a week of cleaning the house, vacuuming, and mopping, I started to do it twice a week out of necessity. And also, and then it kind of crept up to three times a week. Now, believe me, although I find vacuuming and mopping therapeutic, I am very busy and I don't like doing it three times a week, but I have to do it because of the condition inside the house. We have jealousies. And this dust comes in clearly, you can see it on our tables, our dining room tables. Our kitchen is facing the construction, and it is, it's awful. So as a husband and a parent of two, I'm very concerned, very upset. I understand that the construction is beneficial, but if there could be some type of ways to mitigate, to decrease that, the effects of the construction, it would be greatly, greatly appreciated. It's funny that Sherry brought up the, seeing the dust cloud. I actually saw it. It wasn't the same one, but I happened to be talking to a neighbor at the intersection, and I was facing the construction, and it was a windy day, and it was this huge, I think it was more like four stories, so, and it just kind of blew toward, not toward us, but at that time it blew toward the, the other direction of the Kalani Eki. Thank you. And so I did see that. So again, for those who are here, I'm sure we're all, we have parents in the room of children, and so you can understand my, my concern for my own children. And if you were in the same situation, I'm sure you would like to see something done as well. So, thank you again for listening to me, and I appreciate that. And I, I do urge, if there's something, someone here that can start to change for the better, to decrease the type of dust that we're experiencing in the neighborhood, I would greatly appreciate you making that, that effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Suzuki. I, I am the vice chair, and I don't ever have to chair these meetings, so I forgot a few things. One of them is that presenters have five minutes, and Sherry was right on the button. Perfect, perfect, perfect. And others, please try to keep it to two minutes because we have a super-long agenda. Okay. Anybody else from the committee, the community?
This will be quick, two minutes. I'm Grace Leo. I live in the community. I'm also an anesthesiologist physician, and I just want to reiterate on the health effects. You saw my two small children. We also have pets in the outdoor area as well. So in addition to the nuisance of the cleaning, which is what it is, it's more so the, kind of the upper respiratory, the eyes, eye irritation, upper respiratory coughing, especially when those clouds come by. So we do notice it with the kids and even the pets, the four dogs that I have. Again, we understand the project is absolutely beneficial to the community. I don't know what the solution is. It's a very big area, and so climate also affects it. But nonetheless, it has had some impact on the neighborhood and the surrounding communities as far as dealing with the fine particulate matter that gets inhaled or even externally. Luckily, we haven't had any external skin reactions or issues, but more so kind of the upper airway and the irritation with the eyes and throat. So, thank you.
Thank you. And that's why, Sherry, please don't shake that box around. Please. State your name.
I'm John Delapina. I'm also in the Waikui area. Yeah, I'm in the Waikui area as well. And I grew up in Milani, so it's a little bit different farther. But I'm about 42, so just to put a, an age here, I got to see Walmart being built. I got to see Milani Malka being built. I got to see the YMCA being built. And they always had 30-foot wood poles that had black shields all the way around it. So I'm used to construction, but I'm also used to the barriers that go up. And I also jog around the neighborhood. So I jogged to Kahala, and there's constantly houses being renovated, where they knock down the entire house. They also have the wood barriers that go up about 20 or 30 feet, and they have these black shields. And even with the wind, they poke these little holes in it so that the wind can go through and it can pass through. So I was very surprised not to see that when I saw that they're putting up a track that is supposed to benefit the high school and the kids in the high school, and exactly what Grace was saying over here. If these are the kids we're trying to benefit, we may be actually damaging them with all the particulates in the air because it's bad for their lungs, and we don't want to give them long-term problems, kind of like how Red Hill. So, you know, this is preventable. Let's, let's go forward and be preventable instead of reactive. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come here. Any other community members?
Okay. So, my name is Polly, and I live in the Wailei Kahala area. And so I'm just like two blocks in Kalani. So I have asthma and allergies, and I have noticed a change. I have more days that my asthma is active than it's not. And my sinuses are running more than they're not. And I'm seeing my allergist more than I should be. So I agree with this gentleman over here. There should be some, some type of a barrier that should be up. That's what the rules are when you build a house, and that's what should be happening here.
Thank you.
Any more residents from the community area affected by Kalani High School? We had three more that were going to attend, but they're not here.
That's okay. I think, I think we get the message.
I have a question. What about the school? Have they presented any issues about their students? Has the principal talked to you folks after my question? Yeah. And if not, why not? You know, you think the school would be standing up and jumping up and down for their students that are in there every day. So, that's my question. And how long, I know it's going to be a while, but how long is the project going to run?
From what we heard, the project, I believe I'm not going to take an oath. I think it's running through the summer, and if anyone's here can tell us otherwise, it's going through the summer. And there was a letter sent out where it said the principal had reported, and I believe this, he hadn't reported any, receiving any calls about the dust problem, and that they were applying water daily to help mitigate the dust. But our problem is, what we're used to in that, in all these communities, is to hunker down. We only just began talking about it. No one came to the neighborhood board to talk about it, to tell us, not the elected officials, not the school, not the governor's rep. You know, that's why we're all here every month, is to get this information. And what we're saying is, we're complaining now, and we want, we want hopefully to get some reaction to it. And I'm sure they'll, they'll care to do something. And then it also said that they were doing water control work. But we've watched the water truck. He goes, the water truck is a substandard si, is too small a size for a two-acre project. And it goes around the gravel track and spits out. But no one is watering or hosing down the water on the two-acre dirt field that they're excavating. And they're not, and when they're dumping that stuff into the trucks, and that's blowing, then no one is hosing that down. So that's our concern, that they're not hosing or watering when the work is being done. And that's what's causing all this dirt. That's just one little area. That's my, show the picture again. That's one little, no, Stephanie, right behind it. Four square feet, one time. And over here are one of the other tables. Thank you. I understand that there, there are DOE officials here? Okay. Can you please step up to the mic? Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us at the board. Audrey Downer, interim assistant superintendent for the Department of Education. I'll yield my two minutes to other important people that know some of the answers to the questions that arise. But Mr. Bill, I'm sorry, to answer your question, we are in contact with the principal, and he hasn't said, I mean, there's no complaints from him with the students that I know of. And about the schedule, Sherry, others will answer. So, we have Keemo Martin, our construction manager, he will come and address. We have the general contractor here, and we have some consultants. So they'll come up and tell you what they need to know. But thank you for having us, but I'll be here.
Thank you so much. Please, please lift, lift the mic and, and begin with your name.
Hello, my name is Keemo Marion. I'm the public works manager for the DOE Construction Management Section. And I have with me John Maroka. He's the designer for the track, and he's also designed dozens and dozens of these tracks all around the state. He's probably the premier guy for doing this kind of work we have. This was his project, so I was hoping he could give you some details on when they're going to be covering up. It's going to be a turf field, so it won't remain dirt for very much longer. But I'll give you a timeline on that.
So the contractor's here. He provided a three-week look ahead, and basically they're going to begin installation of the subdrain system under the field, and as soon as that's in, within the next, they're going to start there, I think, maybe next week, they're going to be starting on that. They're going to start laying a geotextile filter fabric on there, which is going to be basically contain the dust. So as they go along there, they're going to just seal it up. So within the next three weeks, it should be pretty much sealed up, and you won't see any exposed earth within that field area anymore. Okay? But thank you for your patience regarding all this dust coming around. And yeah, I know it's just hard to contain dust when it's 30 feet high, blowing that high.
Is there some way to improve the, the water?
That's for the contractor. They would just have to increase frequency, and as you said, and when they're done.
Are they willing to do that for the next?
Actually ask, would they be able to have a chance to come up and ask that question?
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not sure who's, who's, who's here from? Hi.
My name's, my name's Cameron Buck. I'm project manager for the project, for the contractor, the Core Group.
I'm sorry, the contractor is who?
The Core Group. Yeah, the Core Group is the name of the company. And so, and we're glad to be here, you know, tonight, and to listen to everybody's concerns. And of course, we want to make things as best as possible during this construction period of time. Now, since day one, we, we have a water truck, you know, that's onsite. We put about 10,000 gallons of water per day on the field. As, as John was speaking, as far as from this point forward, we finally received a load of our piping materials that we've been waiting for there, and so they were delivered. And Monday, we'll start installing the piping that goes in the field for the drainage in the football area. Now around the track, 90% of that is already rocked, you know. So when we excavate it, because that's primarily where we bring trucks in and out of the project there. And that, so that, that, that is a rock-based material on there, so it's not exposed dirt, you know, just in a couple little areas.
So, can, can you, do you know what's causing these huge 30-foot dust storms?
Well, I mean, of course, you know, I mean, we, we get the wind, and then it starts to swirl, and it goes up.
And is there any, any way to anticipate them or mitigate them?
Well, I mean, day, I mean, daily, since we put about 10,000 gallons of water on there per, per day, you know. I mean, we've had a water truck there since December onsite, right? We have the rental, we rented it, right? It's a rented piece of equipment there. And we have a meter there on one of the hydrants at the school. And so, that's what we, that's what we put on there a day. Now, water dissipates fairly quickly, understood, right? I mean, especially when you have windier days and such. And so, now that we have that material delivered for the piping that goes in the field for the under drainage, it gets covered with a fabric material that goes over, over the field, all of the dirt, and then the piping. And so, that, that area inside the track, which is basically the football, football field there, soccer field, whatever, multi-use area there, then, you know, it won't be able to lift up the dirt between any of our watering activities that we do, you know. So, we keep a record of what we have there, you know, as far as how many gallons that we put and such, but...
Okay, thank you.
This is a mention. When we first, this was brought to our attention, calling that original letter came. We went, we did some site inspection work. That's how that letter that went back to you kind of was generated. And the contractor's been cooperative with us, and trying to respond to that. The response they've been doing is, they've been deploying, they've been sending guys out on weekends to water. I don't think that they were necessarily watering on the weekends before that. Is that factually correct?
Yes. Except for days that we worked there. Except for days that we worked there.
That's possibly been how it got made out in some situations, and somebody's petition. To remedy that, we're having them come on the weekend. They've been doing this, you know, on their own dime, which we appreciate. They've also been keeping track of a water log, to keep track of like how much they're putting and when. So they're trying to be more diligent of this situation. Has it been getting, it was also very windy a couple weeks ago about when that complaint came. So I'm hoping in the last couple of weeks, it's been better. I would actually like to know from the community, has it been any better? Yeah, it has been windy. Would you be willing to make sure your guys are getting the whole area?
Of course. And that's, you know, I mean, we're spending a lot of effort, right, to put it down. I'm not saying that we're eliminating.
Let's calm down here. Yeah. Let's just be respectful, everybody.
Okay, so it sounds like there is at least a three-week.
No. I went up there and looked at the water truck when he was peeling up. He was walking around smoking, and the water was spewing out of his hose and going down the road into the storm drain. That's what was happening with his water. And then when we watch him, he's watering the gravel track. And what we keep asking you, and no one is really dealing with it, is why aren't they watering the work that's happening in the dirt field when it is happening? Because that's when the worst of the dirt is happening. And you're not addressing that certain.
Well, we're more than willing to take some photographs, a daily basis, of us watering the field, so you can see that we are putting, you know, quite a bit of water on the field, you know, the dirt part. And then, of course, yes, when they're working, yeah.
Okay, well, sure. Please, please go to the mic, because there, this is.
You've said a lot of nice things, and you've tried to appease us, but I'm not appeased. We thought we'd sit silent and let you get away with what you were doing. You didn't install dust barriers. We did not know about this project. We could not voice our concerns at the time of its being presented. You just went ahead and did it. I don't hear anybody here talking in a professional manner of how the day-to-day work takes place. I don't think you gentlemen have been there witnessing it. You get reports, but that's not good enough. I go, I live right across the street. I get in my little car, I go over there, and I watch, and I take pictures. And that little water truck never goes on the dirt field. It only goes around and spits, spits, spits around the gravel field, road that's in there now. I'm not gonna talk about past tense, because what's done is done. But I don't think, that's why, when do you see residents come out? Rarely. They're out, we're upset, we want to see something happen. We don't wanna wait three more weeks, and then there's gonna be a delay, or this and that, it's gonna be a policy, we'll never be able to contact you again. This, this is it. Why can we not get the dust barrier? That is a requirement with, you know, dust, fugitive dust, Department of Health. It's in your project requirement when the.
Excuse me, let's give him a chance to answer.
There's a lot of stuff that I.
There is a lot of stuff, but we have a lot of stuff on the agenda too, and we've already.
Yeah, but you've got residents.
Right, I get that. But let's try to keep it short. So we have specific questions. What about putting up the dust barrier? Is that, is that doable?
I would need to talk to the design aspect of the project and see if there was a requirement in the design. Normally, I would expect that water application would be adequate, dust control, or something like this. If that's what we do for most projects like this, we're doing a lot of them all over the place.
I believe we have the design element here, right? Wasn't somebody here introduced as the design element?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Maroka? Could you step up to the microphone, please?
The dust barrier will help under certain conditions, but under the big conditions of the high winds, which they're mentioning, you know, when things are going 30 feet high, really, it's only gonna be the dust control at that point, because the dust barrier is 12 feet high, and that's where it'll go over that. And unfortunately, I, I'm, yeah, I feel your pain. So there's different dust mitigation measures that they could do, which is going to be opening up an area, sealing it up, the construction means and methods, so they can water, keep watering. And as you mentioned, you know, it's gonna dry up, it wasn't done on the weekends, that kind of stuff. And I understand, you know.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not hearing anyone say, "I'm sorry," and we'll see to this.
Could we have somebody give us a point of contact for dealing with this issue?
I'll leave you my business card, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
And I'll say, "I'm sorry. Things happen. Construction work is a beast or a beauty or whatever, and I'm sorry. These are for the children here. We heard all your concerns, we saw the dirt on the rag and the walls and the pictures. We will go back and talk about this." The poor contractor cannot promise another water truck, or two water trucks. He's working within a budget. And I'm sorry that you folks weren't notified. It's not our job to notify you folks. I don't know whose job it is. But all the schools that we do work for, we don't go to the neighborhood boards and tell what the project is, et cetera. Things are online, if you wanna look at it. But I'll leave you my card, and I apologize. And we'll get to talking.
Thank you so much. Okay. Sure.
Are there going to be field lights on this new project? No, that's good, because then you save Kalani Eki Street. But just to let you know. Sorry.
For what it's worth, as soon as we are able to get this dirt area covered, all this area that you're concerned with is gonna be under six inches of gravel, a turf field, an asphalt.
No mowing, no gardening, no wind blowing.
No, and then you'll find out how much of this dust really was coming off that field. I'm hoping your house cleaning becomes a lot easier. But I don't know, you'll find out.
We already have found out. We watched this blow on us.
Thank you so much.
May I just let them know that in the Department of Health Clean Air Branch, it talks about the need for dust screens? And in the Kalani High School specs for the contract, they said that they would, the work shall conform to the Hawaii Administrative Rules Title 11, Department of Health, Chapter 16.1, About Air Pollution Control as amended. That meant that Kalani High School was going to adhere to the Department of Health and the dust barriers and dust control, and they haven't done it. And if anyone is there watching the project as it was going on, we, as film managers, film production managers of film sites, there has to be someone onsite at all times. And I can assure you right now that how this project's been going on, no one's been watching. And if they've been watching, they don't care. And we keep saying, you're not hosing down when the product, when the work and stuff's being dumped, no one is hosing it down. And I go on those job sites at KAL Moka or something, you watch it, they got huge hoses. They water hose like a fire thing. And they hose down the dirt so it doesn't blow. It's not happening. And it's kind of rude to think that we're supposed to be patient and supportive of children. Our children are being infected.
Thank you. Okay, we have.
If I might ask the DOE to consider strongly who your next contractor for a project might be, if we didn't get concerns met in the very initial beginning of the project.
Sorry, I have to address that, so.
Do we have any? Yes, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, what's her name? Yeah, yeah, Stephanie, I'm sorry. It's not our choice, it's low bid. That's government, it's low bid, yes. Yes, Kevin, they do.
Okay, is anybody online wanting to say something? Go ahead, go ahead, Michael. Hello?
Were you talking to me?
Yes, did you?
I like speak towards the well, if we're on that subject right now. I think you're talking about dust, but I was, I was here to speak on behalf of the well that was covered up.
Okay.
The water well.
Go ahead.
Okay, geez. So my name is Michael Hali Hikalea. I'm currently the president of Puu Noo Wailupe. And my family has a long history in that area. From the Wailai, Wailupe, Kuleo, Mauna Loa, and New Area. And I think the decision to cover it up was reckless. That's the best word I can actually use to describe the decision that was made to seal over the well, because what's gonna happen is, it's gonna get forgotten about. And nobody really knows what kind of connection that well get in our history. And there's a few articles. One was in relationship to Kamehameha III in the area during his reign in the 1800s, where he sought out fresh drinking water. And they took him to a family that was caring for the water well that was there from previous aliis. So if somebody can tell me that that's not the well, and prove to me that that's not the well, but we don't really know. Nobody has ever brought that up. So I like read something related to water, because it's all connected from the mountain to the sea. And it's an article from the newspaper in 1923. And this was my third great-grandmother had passed away. And she lived in the area. Anyway, it says, it goes like this, "With feelings of grief and love for my mother, please leave a space on your swift messenger so that the multitude from the rising of the sun in Haie Haie to Kumukai until the hidden waters of the Pa'o'o fish in the limu kala, which is seaweed, and in the pits of the islands. She loved the black limu of Kiahi'a." The black limu is the limu ele'e. "As she would pick while the ruffling winds of the Keala Kea would blow. She did not see the covenant waters of Kamehameha protecting Wailupe." And I think that's another point I like point out. You know, this one's school, yeah? And there's so much rich history and education that could be utilized by the DOE in that area. And the water would actually be one really good starting point for, in fact, I think that would be the starting point for the school as far as studies. Studies of history of, you know, water, water flow, whatever, whatever could come about from that. So anyway, it goes on to say that she also loved the nenui and the o'eeo of the swift waters of the ocean. Her beach friends were satisfied with the reef flats of Ha'o. They cherished the inua reefs that blew, the leaves of the land of native lands. The parents were used to picking limu kahu and kahau and swimming in the waters of Luume, Kiavinui and Avai. She adored the famous waters of the upland. So now, I went from the ocean, if anybody listening really, what I'm saying.
Mr. Mr. Hikalea, if you could summarize, please?
Okay. Let me just finish this one, at least this sentence. She adored the famous waters of the upland where she would stroll. So what I'm trying to say is, it's all connected. And that water well could be the starting point, and I believe it is, for future generations that could actually take us to find a little bit more in detail the history that is lost from the area. Because I went from the ocean to the upland, so it's, there's a migration of water that is transferring, or, oh, how would you say that? Anyway, it's flowing underground. And I believe that the construction of that well, if any of you saw the pictures.
Mr. Hikalea, we have an opportunity to have somebody from the DOE respond. Should, can we do that now?
Sure.
We have to keep moving. Okay, thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm Jaden Orasaki with the DOE Facilities. So with respect to the inadvertent findings, and actually with just the assessment of the track and field site, in working with the State Historic Preservation, it was determined that there was no effect before we started the project. And then as we were doing the project, it was found earlier this year, late or earlier this year. And then again, we stopped work, consulted with the State Historic Preservation, and then research was done concurrently, and it was determined that we could go ahead. It was determined it was a cesspool probably there prior to, based on other structures that may have been there during the 1950s. And then again, it was covered when the school was here, where the, I guess, the tennis courts were previously before we went and took it down. And then it was determined we could go ahead in terms of the mitigation, was that we would be able to cap it. And then I put a state historic identification number on there, so it would be identified and on record, knowing that this cesspool stone structure is there. And so that was completed in accordance with the State Historic Preservation requirements.
Okay, thank you.
So can I respond to that?
Yes, you can, quickly.
Sure, so the determination that you folks made that that's on cesspool, I cannot believe that. I really cannot, because if that was on cesspool, the houses would be nearby. You're not gonna put one cesspool in the ground and make the house a quarter of a mile away. So I really think, you should think about that. In fact, the first mistake was, you guys never involved the community. That's the first mistake was made. Should've had the community involved from the get-go.
Thank you. Is there some documentation through shifty's work or something where they can look?
We have.
Is there some way to make that available?
Yeah, I think we can provide that.
That'd be great, that'd be great. And do we have, we don't have your contact information? But we could probably, we can, we can put it in the Google Drive, and I think you mentioned you're part of the Puu Honua Wailupe?
Yes.
Right, so we'll be able to find you that way. Thank you, thank you for participating. Okay, I can't read it. See, oh, Chris Kramer. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I lost connection when Uncle Michael was speaking, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, share a little further on the well, and, um, because when it was reported and work stopped, um, I contacted, uh, the school and, and, um, because there was no notice to the community, um, I, I contacted the principal and, and, um, it, you know, the response I got was that, oh, you're too late, uh, you should've been here Friday, they covered it up. And, um, the, and another well in the community, they recently found, um, a very rare unique population of opai'ula, it's a red shrimp that only lives in, in this site, and then so, um, yeah, it was, it was very kind of alarming that they would do this so quickly without any notification of the community of what's there, and, um, especially with the history that Kalani was originally supposed to be named for Wailei, you know, Wailei High School, and, um, that was alluding to the spring water in that area. If you look in archaeological reports, they talk about, uh, spring water being flumed through the field there, so, um, you know, with, with no notice and no information, um, you know, we were just kind of left to guess, and, um, after the fact, kind of try to find out what's happening, so. I don't know if that's gonna continue that where community is the last to know or left out of the, the picture, but I hope not.
Thank you, Chris. It does seem to be a recurring issue. All right, and? What? Okay, wait, um, so Janine?
Um, I would just like to reiterate what Chris said, um, it was very distressing to learn about this well, and I have to say, hundreds, in fact, probably even thousands of people saw the post about it and reshared it and expressed deep horror at what the school did without even consulting the community. So it is not just right here, not these people right here. Thousands of people were very upset, and so that's something that I think, um, it, it's, it's only perpetuates the feeling that Hawaiians have towards anybody in the government that they cannot trust when they say things, because really, that well was beautiful, there's no way that it could've been a cesspool. I know you can find any sort of cultural expert to tell you otherwise, because they get paid to do that. So you need to come to the community, because otherwise, it just doesn't stop. We are, we are so fed up with this happening again and again and again. So please, make sure that you let us know, because we could've, we could've gone there and told you what it was. We could've done, brought in experts to tell you if you had that rare opai'ula on there. I mean, really, you have, you, you have to come to the community whenever you find something like that, because we have so very few of those left that that just makes the ones that we do have that much more important. Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Just to further buttress what everyone is saying, um, I have two, you know,
um, you know what? We're way over time, we don't need to buttress anything, we got it, we got it, yeah, please. But, um, so it's, it's, um, seven thirty, and, um, we, we don't even have quorum. I think we should, I think we should really get on with our agenda and that, ask for it to be on the agenda next time, next month, when, um, no, 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 we don't have to do that. But I, I'm, like, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling since we, we don't have quorum, we can't really do a resolution, what are you asking for? Okay, so actually, this is the perfect, I'm so happy that this issue came up today, because we now have a, a, a real record. Um, we, this is all being recorded, it will be on, um, Olelo, uh, can you tell us when? Since this is our, our first time at this with the Olelo, I'm, I don't know when, but it, it, how? Okay, thanks, Zodell, thanks, okay.
So Wailei Springs will be on the agenda for next month.
If you want it to be, if you, if it's important to, to have a?
I would just like to read the but, just one paragraph of buttressing information about what people have spoken here tonight about Wailei Springs, it's a very important, this area gets overlooked. They don't think there's anything important in Wailei, and?
Okay, I?
Okay, let me, it'll take two minutes. It, I have archaeological documents from the engineering study for the Wailei Avenue, uh, for the Wailei reservoir.
You know, Sherry, we, we really need to move along, there are other people who have come here to present, we get it. I mean, who doesn't get it? We get it, we get it, and it's been memorialized, um, and it'll be on the?
I believe more information is more, so anyway, if we can put on the agenda for next month, I can read this. Because it's important to state the his, history of this area, which is very important.
I agree, but this is not the forum for that now.
Madam Chair, before we leave, thank you for having us. Any correspondence we have will go through the, um, Secretary Zodell. He can disseminate and you can disseminate, so there'll be one point of contact from us to Zodell.
Excellent, really appreciate it.
The new quorum, that I can vote. So they're gonna have to talk about them again. Each time, each time we should come in.
Okay, um, okay, okay, Audrey Hidano is the interim assistant superintendent?
So anything will be through me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Okay, our next, um, our next item is, I see Barry Usugawa is here from? Yeah? Would you like to make your report? We can't vote.
Needed a vote, so.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Good request if you're on the next, next one.
Yes, okay.
It'd be great, thank you.
All right, so.
Excuse me?
Oh.
Vice Chair, sorry, I just wanted to clarify that the item that we're requesting to be on the agenda for next time is the Ushua'Analulu watershed plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Evi. Okay. So, um, the second three point four? Or no, the first subdivision of residential lots HB sixteen thirty and SB three two zero two. I'm not sure who brought it up. Yes? Oh, and you know what, it's still a work in progress in the, in the legislature, it was just morphed ma, majorly this week, Monday. So I'm not sure that we're all prepared to do that, but I, since we can't really do a resolution, let's, make it for, uh, next, next month again. Okay, and then announcements, do we have any announcements? All right, now we're moving on to, uh, section five, officials' reports. Oh, sorry, I totally, public input for items not on the agenda, two minutes each. Yes? Yes, please, please step up to the microphone and, uh, state your name.
My name is Michael from New Valley, and I am coming back to check in. I can't remember exactly who it was from last, the name of the gentleman, but, uh, I don't know if it was Glenn who had, uh, and I think you folks had said that I should come back in and check in on the progress of that.
Um, I checked with the Thompson, uh, family, which is the only other
Yep.
people at the end, and they said they don't have a problem with that. Just so you know that, uh, because we were concerned, like, we don't want to do something that another neighbor might want.
Do you talk with Bruce or who?
No, uh, Tia.
Okay, I can talk with, well.
No, she said they don't have a problem with it, so I wanted to make sure.
With doing?
Yeah.
With, oh, okay, I was like, oh.
Whatever you want to do, whatever you want, they're fine.
Sorry, I was like, oh, this was, haha, my bad.
So I just wanted you to know that we do the, we, we check, because we don't want one person to do
A hundred, yeah, that makes sense.
Something that the whole neighborhood wouldn't care about, so, um, it's fine, we just need to get John Nauchi
Yep.
and find out whether he can help us with the, the shielding.
Awesome, thank you for checking, I appreciate that.
Okay, and then there's a response from the mayor's office on that too, so don't leave. All right. Okay, um, do we have the representative from Congressman Ed Case? Nope, all right, uh, Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, John?
So, John Nauchi is actually not here, um, tonight, but regarding the street light grid installation that, um, you've shared, um, the DDC and MED, I guess that's the design and construction, when the city replaced its five, um, five thou, oh, fifty-three thousand street lights in twenty nineteen with LED street lights, we had very stringent specifications that address light pollution and focus light on, to the road. So the LED light fixture that was selected for this project has been approved by the International Dark Sky Association, or IDA. The fixtures LEDs are recessed inside the luminaire housing and is surrounded by an internal reflector to eliminate any uplight, the cause of light pollution. So the ref, reflector also focuses on the light emitted from the fixture onto the roadway. So in addition to the product specifications, we also have performance criteria for the lighting system. The lighting fixtures also needed to provide illumination to the roadway that met with the recommendations of the Illuminating Engineering Society. Um, the LED street light fronting four three five, Puu Amam, Puu Ah Mama Ne Street is one of the street lights that was converted to an LED street light. So this street light is located near the end of the cul-de-sac of a relatively wide roadway. So reducing the light output or dimming the light with the installation of a grate will reduce its functionality in illuminating the roadway. So in the interest of public safety, the DDC is not able to comply with the request from the individual to dim the street light in order for them or their neighbors to view the sky at night.
You keep telling. Okay. Yes?
If they can't dim the light, can they hood, hood it differently? What's that word? When they, what, shield it, they have different kinds of shields that can angle it a different way.
Yeah, he just read through that thing, though. Okay, all right, um, Governor Josh Green's representative, Dave Day.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody, Dave Day, Special Assistant to the Attorney General, I'm here representing Josh Green tonight. Just wanted to follow up on one issue, uh, regarding, um, a question, uh, by member Goncalves from last time. It was regarding a specific address, and I had it here in a second, six one one nine Cave Q. So, so basically, there was an issue about whether or not a ramp could be installed, correct? And so last time I mentioned that it might very well be that the jurisdiction for this would lie with the city and county of Honolulu, and I confirmed that that's correct. So basically, the way that, um, road jurisdictions work in the state is that the Department of Transportation is responsible or has jurisdiction only over certain roadways, and those are basically the main arteries in the state, you know, H one, um, Kalani Anole Highway. This specific roadway is under the jurisdiction of the city and county of Honolulu. Um, and so there is a specific, um, form, or I, I believe, uh, and, uh, John, if he was here, he would be able to give you basically the form, um, that you could fill out for basically this ramp access. And so this is something that would go through the city and county of Honolulu, um, so, um, I would direct you to John. Okay, um, you're welcome. Um, besides that, I would just would like to report, um, you know, on the current legislative session, we're coming up onto the end of the, um, the general committee, uh, portion of the legislative session. Basically, there's two more days left, and then we'll be going to conference committee. Um, after that point, some, I guess we'll see, um, some bills passed into law, um, with respect to anything in, sorry, I'm hearing an echo, yeah, no problem. With respect to any other concerns that you may have or questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer, I will say that, um, I, the Department of Education personnel, obviously this came up at the last meeting, um, and I reported this to, sorry. I should've maybe led with this, because we obviously had a very robust debate, um, or, or discussion about, um, the Department of Education um, and the dust control issues. I just would like to say from the Governor Green's perspective that I reported, um, the meeting that happened, um, uh, last month. Um, and immediately, this is the reason why, um, so many officials came, is because he heard the concerns, um, and, you know, and basically, we brought these people out. And so hopefully, um, the problems that you've been experiencing will be addressed, so thank you.
Yes. Sherry?
With my, with no wind in here, and I was shaking this around to show it to people, and I wondered why I was coughing, the table is covered with it.
We get it, Sherry, I, no, nobody doesn't think it's not a problem.
Well, they're not gonna deal with it.
Thank you.
Like, can you make them deal with it?
I can, I'm gonna be, I can, I can give a, I'm gonna be giving a report to the governor's office and basically say that there was a universal desire at this meeting for additional action to be taken. I will.
And, any questions? Any other questions? For, for the governor's representative? Kevin?
This is just a suggestion, but when, when you mentioned, oh, so, uh, Kevin, Kevin Mulcurran, Mul, uh, anyway, uh, wife's husband, Susan's husband. Um, when, when you mentioned that, that the ramp was a city issue, uh, something that I've been very excited about using is, uh, the city's three one one app, you know, but there is you know, but there is a flaw where if it has to do with the state, it's not linked. And I, I believe Senator Chang was instrumental in creating that app when he was a city councilman, but it would be nice if the state kind of bought into that, expanded a great program so that when there's a request about with a ramp, you know, it could be forwarded to the appropriate agency rather than someone telling the individual, oh, you have to call this department, but it's a, a nice program. And then most recently, I, I was told that the police department is developing their own app for agricultural crimes, and I thought, you know, we have the city's 311 app, it seemed like it'd be very easy to just expand or make what we have more better, rather than paying another engineer to design another expensive, anyway, thank you.
And may I just address one issue regarding agricultural crime? So one of the things that I can announce is that the Department of the Attorney General is working with several senators, including Senator Richards, who's a rancher from the Big Island, and Senator Gabberts, who's the head of the Agricultural Committee on the issue of agricultural theft, and that's going to be one that we're going to be working on for basically an omnibus legislation for the next session. It's going to be a big project of, of the administration.
Thank you.
Try not to use kind of offensive language, but if we just enforce the existing laws, and it's not agricultural crime, but if you look at Nextdoor, you'll hear about the lady who found someone in her house or the person that watched the golf clubs leave their garage. For myself, the agricultural crime consists of me taking pictures of individuals that were stupid enough to tattoo their names on the back and have, and, and legible, and the police saying, oh, yes, we, we know who that is. What do you want me to do? I don't know, it, it, it's about enforcing the existing laws, creating a more omnibus, or whatever it is, bullshit is bullshit. You know, and we just like you to, you know, basically, if someone comes onto my property, I have a photograph of him taking agricultural products, I'd like him arrested. I don't want him hung, but it would be nice if he at least did some community service work, such as wearing an orange shirt. I am an agricultural thief, and I'm, I'm helping clean up the roads today, or I'm, I'm helping clean up a beach today.
We appreciate the levity.
Yeah.
Can you, would you, would you ask, if you could ask the folks outside to be a little quieter, that'd be great? Okay, all right. One more question, yes? Go ahead.
Got a question for Governor Green's assistant? Yes. So there's like a, at the end of our road, Coffee Q Place, there's like a little dam. I just want to know what that's for, just, just curious as well.
Pardon me, say that, so where, where are you speaking of?
Six one one nine Coffee Q Place is like a dam. Like, there's like a, um, not a dam, but you know, like, you know that? Around a river. I just was. I just was curious, because, um, back in my, uh, back in my old school, we learned about how the rivers are the, actually the top of the aquifer, and if you cover them with cement, then you're blocking the aquifer, I'm guessing, from flowing?
Yeah, so, so what, what specific question do you have about that? Is there something I can take back to one of the departments, or?
It's kind of a big thing, but maybe like making some, like a clearance in the middle, just so.
So is, is the?
Unless if it's sewage, unless if it's sewage, then I guess it's.
Okay, so I'm gonna have to become a little bit more familiar with this area and then the specific issues, is this?
Next month.
But may I ask, is, is the issue that it's like clogged or something, is, is that the, your concern, or?
I guess like, there's not really any water coming through, you know? It's like, usually we'll have like, because usually like, the rivers would be good for like, the ocean, which will bring limu into the ocean, and it will be cultivated in the land.
And?
Could you, could you send some pictures or bring pictures with you?
Yeah, I'll bring pictures next time, oh, I'll bring pictures next time, brother.
Yeah.
Okay, got you, bro, got you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Any more questions for Dave Day? Great. City Council Chair Tommy Waters, District Four, Adam Do.
Hello, good evening. Here's a copy of Chair Waters. Sorry, I walked into the meeting late. I just really wanted to touch base real quickly about the Kalani dust pollution. The Department of Health State Clean Air Branch, they do enforcement for that. Please call them, they will go out, they have the ability to issue notice of violations and stop work orders. Their number is five eight six four two zero zero. There are state laws regarding state and federal laws. State law, it's HRS Chapter three four two B. To have more questions about that, please contact our office. Like I said last time, you don't have to wait for the neighborhood board to bring matters to our attention. If you bring it to us right away, we can try to address it, and then, you know, at the neighborhood board, we can report back. For me, yes, it's, my direct phone number is seven six eight five zero zero, or five zero four four, or you can reach Chair Waters at seven six eight five zero zero four. There are a couple legislative matters that I wanted to update you really quickly. We did introduce today, and it was heard at the Parks Committee, Resolution twenty-four dash sixty-two, which is urging the city for construction of additional beach or sand volleyball courts. Right now, there's only six public courts on the island, does not reach the demand. Parks did request, you know, if, with help with identifying parks that she would like to see a sand volleyball court set, please contact our office. Yes.
I would love to see them in the natatorium.
That's a very creative idea, we've heard that, that before.
I, I, it would solve a lot of problems.
It would, it would, it'd be a great venue.
So.
A lot of UH Waupene has a fantastic sand or beach volleyball team. We hold several tournaments, um, national tournaments in Hawaii, a natatorium would be great. That would require.
I know, a lot.
A lot more, though.
A lot.
Yes.
But.
But, thank you. Real quickly as well, Reso twenty-four dash sixty-four, authorizing the use of overt video monitoring at scenic points in East Honolulu. So this is similar to, you might see them in town, those tall mass with the blue lights and cameras. There's going to be a pilot project to have them at the lookouts to address, you know, there's been an increase, I think there's over three hundred, two hundred and twenty-five vehicle break-ins last year. And as you know, you know, police officers can't be at the lookouts twenty-four seven, so this is just another tool to help out officers. And then, let's see, lastly, oh, so another concern about this board is the speeding on Kalani Anole Highway. We did report some enforcement last month, I believe there was five citations. The board wasn't super satisfied with that. So we asked HPD to go out again between March twenty-second and the thirtieth, between Kalani High School and Kuleo Road, they issued twenty-four citations and one verbal warning. With that, is there any questions that I can bring back to Chair Waters?
Janine?
I would like to thank Chair Waters for his support of twenty-four sixty-five, which is against the, the density housing bill that was going through the legislature, and his, his staff was also very instrumental in getting it changed and reworded and all of that. So please thank him for his support for that.
Yes, and thank you for your support and the many community members that helped contribute to that as well.
Okay, go ahead, Sherry.
What you said about the Department of Health, I've always understood that to be true until I had a call today where I called about what enforcement they were doing for the dust problems we're having on our neighborhood, and we had evidence of it. And the person I was speaking to said that they can't enforce, they give suggestions. So they went over and looked, and they said that if I needed, if we needed to have any infractions put upon them, we had to go over and take pictures, and then they would use that as evidence to enforce an infraction, but that otherwise, they couldn't enforce what's in their documents right here, which the Kalani High School project manager for the project agreed to, to, to the Department of Health. But the guy from the Department of Health said, no, we can't enforce, we just give suggestions.
Were you able to speak to a representative from the Clean Air Branch?
Yes, that's, that's a person I was speaking to.
Okay, so that's not my experience with working with the Clean Air Branch. You can, I can work with you offline.
Okay.
We can also work with representative as well, as it is a, a, a state agency.
Because it's not a question of if it's happening, it's, and I heard them saying, well, you know, if you've got a problem. I said, well, what do you think that is? And I said, even as I was here, you know, doing this in a windless room, it's all over the table here. I wondered why I was sitting here coughing and took a Rico Law, it's because that dirt's in the air. It's just in here, so anyway, that was my understanding what you said, not today, as of this day.
I've had different experiences with the Clean Air Branch, with other construction projects that they'll go out and visit. So I'll, I'll follow up.
One thing I was told, the Department of Education can exempt themselves. Is that true?
I don't want to speak inaccurately.
Okay.
But maybe our, our state representative.
I was, I was told they can exempt themselves, and then that is all, anyway, thank you.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, I'd like to bring up the Wailupi Stream again. The plants are getting longer, taller, and I really think it's a fire hazard for this entire valley that we love. And I know we can't spray anymore, but it's going to be during the fire season a real scary issue, in my opinion, and a lot of my neighbors have mentioned that also. Is there any plan to dredge it? It was last year, April is when they did it, and the plants are back.
Yes, thanks for bringing that up. Chair Waters does agree with you, there is a work order for the Department of Facility Maintenance to maintain that stream. I will send you the work order number that we can follow, and I believe I spoke last time or the time before. They also, the FM does post their schedule online as well.
Thank you, Adam. Oh, we have one more, I'm sorry, Shelley, go ahead.
Just, could you, could we find out if steaming the stream is an option? I understand from a very reliable source that steam is actually a very eco-friendly way of killing the foliage in its streams, and would probably be exceptionally efficient. Can we find out if that's an option?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'm not familiar with that, but it sounds really cool.
Yeah.
I will bring that up with the department.
Okay, cool, I think.
And I'll, I'll come back.
Talk to Kevin about it.
Okay. Kevin and I, we, we talk a lot, he's great.
Okay. Okay, last call, questions for, okay, thank you. And Senator Chang's representative, is she online? Excellent.
Hi, yeah, I'm here. My name is Marley Mason, I'm an intern for the office, so I'll be giving the April update. So the first thing is, you can read our April District Nine newsletter, and I'll send the links for everything that I talk about in the chat after I'm done speaking. And then we also have the housing newsletter that you can sign up for if you're interested. And we also just wanted to provide a link to the Capitol contact page, which would be a great way to, if you have any concerns or anything that you would like to get to representatives, that would be a great way to do so. And then as for the legislative update that we have, the money committees have until April fifth to approve numerous Senate and House bills relating to housing. However, three bills have already made it past the hurdle and will move to the conference stage, including SB two zero six six, which establishes another means for a housing project to seek an exemption from laws and rules of the state that are developed under various programs of the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. SB two eight three six, which establishes within the Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism the Interagency Council for Maui Housing Recovery to coordinate and facilitate Maui's permanent housing recovery and facilitate consultation and collaboration between state and county agencies on housing recovery initiatives for the islands of Maui. Designates the Executive Director of the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation to serve as a Chair of the Council and makes an appropriation. HB, and the last one is HB one six three three, which repeals the leasing restriction on owner builders to obtain an owner builder exemption to act as their own contractor and to build or improve residential or farm buildings or structures on their own property, and do not offer the buildings or structures for sale. So that's the legislative update, and then the next thing is that the city is beginning curb project, curb ramp projects at various locations in East Honolulu. Work is projected to be completed by the end of October two thousand and twenty-four, and it's expected to run on weekdays from eight thirty AM to three thirty PM, excluding holidays. The project includes, but is not limited to, the demolition, removal and disposal of existing pavements, curbs, gutters, sidewalks and curb ramps, construction of new sidewalks, curb ramps and curb and gutters, reconstructing of pavement transitions, adjustment of utility box frames and covers, and restoration of all impacted pavement stripping. And so the schedule of where this construction will take place for, um, I can just, I'll send it all into the chat because it's kind of a lot to read, and I don't want to confuse everybody, but that's all I have. And if you have any concerns, I will take it back to the Senate as well.
Questions for Senator Chang? Is she going to put that online for us? Where, where are you going to put it? The list?
Sorry, I can put it in the chat right now.
Oh, it, well, in the room, we can't really, that doesn't.
Okay, okay, okay. Would you like me to just say it out loud for you guys?
Oh, it's in the newsletter.
Yeah, it might be in the newsletter as well.
Thank you, thank you, Adam. Any other questions for Senator Chang? Okay, moving on. Representative Mark Casham, who is here. Yay.
Good evening. So, hi, good evening, everybody, thank you for having me, my name is Mark Casham, I'm the representative for this area. I just wanted to say, going back to ag def. Ag, the ag, ag def bill was my first bill I ever passed in the legislature, that was a long time ago. Nothing changed. And you're absolutely right, because the hard part with agriculture, because I was the ag chair and the vice chair for a long time too, is that when people get caught, and the cops will turn around and say, or the judge will turn around and say, you cannot prove that that was your papaya, even though they're coming out with a truckload of papayas on for your farm. So, yes, if the governor, oh, the governor is gone. If you guys have any issues or any ideas, please let me know. As you saw on the news, marijuana died, actually, we knew it was going to die early on because I think the first round, it had something like twenty-two no votes, and if you looked at all the no votes and And if you looked at all the no votes, and everybody sits on finance, and you figured it out right away, that's, it's never going to get past finance. But it kept moving, and that's why now it's, when it reaches finance, everybody gets the aha moment of, hey, did you see the no vote? Everybody sitting on finances voting no. So, Agro, the marijuana bill was dead, but it was dead a long time ago. Going back to the housing bill, we, the legislature took out a lot of the problematic areas within the bill. So all the, the areas, Part 1, which, which has to do with the subdivision, the minimal block size and whatnot, we took all that out. And what was remaining was Part 2 and Part 3, which is mainly the exemptions from fees and other stuff. I'm trying to remember right offhand, but that's what it, that's, when the, when it comes to the floor, that's how the bill would be amended drastically. And do you have any questions? Yes.
Go ahead, Janine.
Thank you for your support on that bill. And it was amazing to me to watch it, two hours, all the planning people, oh, yeah, yeah, we love this, we love this. And then you ask them the question, well, can't you already do this? And they're like, oh, yeah. It just was so amazing, like, then do it. You're your own county, you know. And then, of course, then it comes up, oh, well, we don't have the infrastructure, or we don't have, we have NIMBYs. I'm like, seriously, dude? Just do it on your island if you want it. Don't come to Oahu and tell us we got to do.
You'd be amazed how many people have came up to me and asked, talked to me about that question. Because you're right, you're absolutely right. I believe, well, the county already has the power. And I'm sitting there, which was really frustrating, is that they already have the power to do everything in that bill. We have multi-family zoning, they can re, they can rezone if they want. And I don't think that, I, I understand the concept of the bill. They want to increase housing and increase density. I don't think that's the real way that it should be done. Because this increasing density, good, that's fine, but it, this needs to be planned out on a bigger scale. You cannot, if, if it was, if it was done the way the bill has, Peter Savio was right, put it that way. It would have been a hodgepodge of everything. You, this county and the, the state and the county have to come together and plan where the growth is going to be and put in the needed infrastructure, roads, sewers, school, everything needs to go, go in line with the, with the planning and infrastructure going forward with the additional density. So that's the proper way. And that's kind of what I was trying to get at. Guys, you already have the power to do this. So if you're so supportive of doing it, just go upzone your own property. So.
So is that, that beautiful planning process you just described to us, is that, is that happening?
Yes and no. The problem, we have the community plans, the neighborhood plans. They're, they sit on the shelf and they never get implemented. So what the, what other municipalities usually do when we're at a crisis point like this is they'll come in and they will identify, okay, we have a housing crisis. We need more, we need more homes. So the county will come, the city and the county and the state will come together, and they will open up land for redevelopment. They're upzoned certain areas and say, okay, this is where, this is where housing is going to be. This is where multifamily is going to be. This is where single family is going to be. So if we're bringing housing in this area, we need to bring the infrastructure to this area. So that would be roads, sewer. If there's not sufficient schools or capacity, you would start planning the schools in that area. And you, this is a planned rollout over a series of years, decades also, if it's a big enough area. But in Hawaii, everything is developer-driven. It's all, the developer comes in front of the county and says, okay, or in fact, they start off by the state by going to the Land Use Commission and asking to rezone from the land use all the way to county zoning. And it's all developer pushed versus county planning and count, the municipalities pushing this board and opening up land. Does that answer your question? So.
I'd like to thank you for being here tonight. Very few elected officials ever come here, Mark. And it's great to get your opinion and write from the horse's mouth. So thank you for taking the time. I know you guys are busy, but you're the only guy that's shown up in quite a while. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And this room is too small, and we would like to move to your suggested place, which is Inahaina Elementary, but they're charging the neighborhood board $200? Is that what? What? Around $200? And I'm, I'm wondering if you can pull any strings for.
No, I can't. Well, no, I can't. I don't want us to go to jail, right? The prosecutors are looking at this. But no, there's a whole process, there's a whole process under the DOE that everybody has to follow. And regardless of which, everybody has to go through that. You have to apply through the DOE website. I actually like this room personally, but. No, they, well, they're too dusty.
Whatever happened to Wailupi School? Was it no Wi-Fi? Wailupi Elementary? It's a great little location.
Oh, um, no air conditioning and several members didn't like the, the lighting. And that, no AC. I'm trying to remember. I can't remember. I'll have to look it up on whether, on my spreadsheet, whether the, it had on the Wi-Fi. I think it, I think it did have Wi-Fi, though. We can revisit that. It just seems like we have this Inahaina right there, and it's so convenient for everybody. And that cost should be the reason we can't go there. Seems, I don't know. Kilo, Kilo Hana, I don't know, was, I think it was, it was very reasonable. It was like $25. And actually, so we could, we could, we could revisit that. Again, it just seemed, it would be nice to have it here in, in Inahaina, which is our, our most central kind of place. So. Go ahead, Sherry.
Two questions about the density increase for residential development and another one about the Kalani Field. But since we already have the ability to ADU, why do they need to, and that, you can't do that unless you have sufficient sewer capacity, electrical and street parking and street usage. So how could, if I go by this new rule that they want to pass, I could put three houses in my backyard. So, but if ADU, I can't. So I don't understand how they're putting, what are these guys smoking? I guess it's the guys who want the marijuana.
Yeah, that I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know how, if you got ADU, why they're trying to push this through.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I can't speak for other people why they're doing that. I mean.
So jumping back to the Kalani High School field, can you, do you believe we deserve to get a fence, a dust control, fencing around the project? And would you help us get it?
I will work with the DOE. I cannot promise anything, but I will work with the DOE on that. They're usually good. Well, I will work with the DOE.
Thank you. Because you got the money, you secured the money, you and Senator Chang. You took the bows. You didn't tell us.
Oh, yeah, we've been working on that.
Normally.
2014.
If you guys could supply us with even paperwork, we could have brought these concerns before it ever happened, and we could have been dealing with it in advance in a nice way, without dragging the community here with their babies and, you know, all young families now. So, and as I was saying, I was showing this around, and I didn't realize, with no wind in here, the table is covered in this dirt. And I was sitting here coughing, I took a Requlaw, I don't know. And I realized this stuff flew even in here. The table is covered with it. I'm sorry to say, I'm going to say it again.
Please, please don't take the dirt out of the bag.
Well, people have to know how bad it is. It's covered in it.
We got it. We got it. Okay, Shelley?
Just briefly, if, if the DOE has to choose the low bid, the system is inherently flawed. Because everybody bidding for this is going to cut corners so that they can get the contract. So really, I think that's the area that needs to be addressed. Is there a better way for government agencies to accept bids other than the low bid? I never take the low bid whenever I have somebody working on my house, ever. And I'm broke. So that says a lot.
Yeah. I don't know how to answer that, because every year we try to change procurement. There's been, I mean, every year it comes up. Everybody complains about the procurement. But for whatever reason, we never seem to be able to fix it. I agree with you. I mean, it's flawed. And the lowest bid is not always the best bidder, right? So there's a lot of, I think there's, we've tried every which way, but for whatever reason, it's just one of those issues that are very difficult to change. And we've even tried to put in something simple, like past performance is required, right? To, but that, even having that kind of changes was difficult. So. Okay.
Kevin, would you like, you want to speak in the mic, please?
I don't, I don't think there's any other way than accepting the low bid. That's the right way to do it. But one of the reasons my company doesn't bid on state or city or federal jobs, the specifications are like phone books, but they're not followed. So, so if, if there was enforcement, whether it be for the speeding laws on Kalani Anoli Highway, or when we looked at bidding on an irrigation system at Sandy Beach, it was very clear. Trenches are to be buried at the end of each day. I thought, God, that's going to create a lot of costs. The trenches were left open for the irrigation system for two or three months. And then with Kalani High School, I, I can pretty much guarantee you that Sherry is correct as far as the, the rules regarding dust control. Who cares what it costs for water or how they control the dust, whether it be with a dust screen or water? But, but they're, they're required to control the dust. They're not doing it, and they're, it's not being enforced. So, you know, and, and that, and I would suggest suing them because it shouldn't be your cost or your time cleaning up their mess. They, the dog comes and dumps in your, in your yard, you want the person with the dog to pick it up, you know?
Thank you so much, Rep. Hashem. Any more questions for Rep. Hashem? Okay. All right. Case, our 5.7 Hawaii Department of Transportation, Casey Abe, are you, is he?
Yes, I'm here. I'm trying to show my screen here. This is a little different system. I'm getting a hard time showing my screen, so I might not be able to show my screen. But anyway, good evening, Vice Chair Lucas, and members of the Kuleo Kalani Eki Neighborhood Board, Casey Abe from the State DOT Highway Division. At last month's meeting, there was a request for the status of House Bill 2267 relating to the, to highway safety and the DOT's automated speed enforcement system, with the hopes of Kalani High, Kalani Anoli Highway being selected as one of the pilot location for this program. Unfortunately, the bill was deferred by the House Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee on February 9. There are concerns with not having an agreement with the county police departments on the threshold on when a ticket should be issued, 5, 10, 30 miles over the posted speed limit. Another concern was vehicles traveling at the speed of free flow on the freeway that may be higher than the threshold, which may cause vehicles to suddenly brake before they enter the area of the speed camera, thus causing rear end collision or other safety hazard. Also, the program will create a more, more work for the court system, and especially the police department. Since the red light camera system, the police officers must review and approve all the 11,789 citation that was issued in the first year of the pilot program. Also, this past Monday, I did a quick investigation, field investigation. Noticed there was a lot of graffiti in the Neighborhood Board area. I am working with our Oahu District Maintenance Office to address this island-wide graffiti problem. I will provide an updated report at a future Neighborhood Board meeting. Also noticed that two highway lining standards were missing. One going eastbound on Kalani Anoli Highway past Wailupi Circle, and the other going westbound past Waila Eki Par. And finally, I noticed an overhead street name sign for Kuleo Road was missing. I'll be working with our Oahu District Maintenance Office and provide a follow-up report at a future Neighborhood Board meeting. This concludes my report. Again, if you take any questions at this time.
Questions for Mr. Abe? No? Thank you. Oh, Sherry, go ahead.
So Casey, I understand the situation you're in and the police are in, but what, you know, what, what's the public going to do when the police, I was told by a police officer at one of Mayor Blangiardi's pound hall meetings at Kalani High School, went up and asked him, you know, why aren't they giving more tickets? I said, they make a lot of money if they gave tickets on Kalani Anoli Highway. He says, ah, you know, if we give tickets, the legislature just throws them out. So they don't want to enforce. So, and you don't want to do red light cameras because, oh, people might stop when they're going in that area, and they might fender better. So what does that leave the community where this is a raceway park? It's not even, it's, it's not even a joke anymore. And there's a guy next door, La Cahe, it was really funny. He said what I've been saying. He said, you know, they had some speed hump out there near Luna Lilo on the highway or somewhere on Luna Lilo Home Road. He said, why put it there? He said, Kalani Anoli Highway, he said, if you do 35, this is this guy talking. He said, there, everybody passes me. He said, there are blocks in back of me, right up to 18-wheelers. And even the police pass me, he said. So what are we doing about the, you know, what can you do to enforce the speed limit? Got to do something. There's got to be a choice.
Yeah, well, like you said, temporarily, even temporarily, they could install raised crosswalks. I don't know if you drove past by Hawaii, Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board area. They just installed a new raised crosswalk right by, uh, let's see, right before you reach Cocoa Head Shopping Center area. So, you know, a lot of the communities have been asking for speed humps, even at civilized intersections, because they do understand that that's, this is the quickest way to slow traffic down until they can resolve the concerns of this automatic grid speeding enforcement system. And so these are just one quick way you can do that. And that's from the state side. So we're, we're offering that. We just need support from your Neighborhood Board as to where you would like these raised crosswalks or raised speed tables be installed. And then we can work with our traffic brands to conduct a study to confirm that this is the best place to install them. And our director would be more than happy to install them.
Some people in our Neighborhood Board have already told you that they don't want the hump, the humps on the highway. They'd like you to have the police enforce the speed limit.
Yeah, well, that's.
Or is that done, done and over? Is that done with, or?
Yeah, so that's where, um, the City of Kalanahanulu, the Police Department belongs to, City of Kalanahanu and Councilmember Adam Do, Representative Adam Do, mentioned about having the police going out there, and they issued citations last month. So it's the police issuing these citations and enforcing the laws. I mean.
They could get hundreds. There isn't a soul on that highway doing the speed limit, not a soul. And if I go home tonight and do 35, everybody in the world's going to pass me, including the police. So what, there has to be a whole change of culture, you know what I'm saying? And it's been going on for years. It's getting worse and worse. Thank you.
Yes, Shelley. Yes, Shelley?
I'd just like to say that I am not against the humps. I don't know if there are other people who are for it, but I've seen it to be very effective. And Pearl City and that incredibly dangerous crosswalk over by Coco Marino that he just addressed is so much better now. I drive it every day, and it's a market improvement. So, I'm happy to revisit the humps.
Thank you. Yes, Kevin?
I was at a traffic coming workshop with Representative Ward at Ioni High School. And I believe the Department of Transportation told me that each hump is another $50,000. And so, I think if we enforce the speed limits, whether it be asking the police to do their job, or with the cameras, we would having, have revenue coming in versus throwing out $50,000 for each of these little bumps, because people are not doing their job. But anyway, they're fun to speed over, and you can kind of get airborne, you know, if you hit them just right.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Polly.
Yeah, just because, I think, I think, because like, one time, I was riding my bike, right, and I actually got hit by a car when I was riding my bike. And then I feel like if there's a speed hump, just at least, like, maybe one, just like one right next to Kalani High School, too, would be nice, just one by Kalani High School, because there's plenty of kids that walk around, walk across the crosswalk. And, you know, if one of them got hit, then, you know, that would be the end of like, that person right there, you know? Because once you hit somebody, you just, you lose like, a lot, a lot of stuff. Because if you could damage them, you could, like, you know, you could, the worst could be like death or something, you know? I don't want to talk about that kind of stuff. But, you know, I think that when I got hit by the car, it was two old ladies, so I just let them go. Because like, I didn't want them to like, get like, you know, arrested or something. So, I was like, oh, just go. So, making, like, it's like, not everybody's going to do that. So, maybe a hump would be a good idea, you know?
A response for that. At Kalani High School, the deaths that we've had and people getting hit were where there were no traffic lights. And that's why we got the traffic light installed at Wa'aa. We had two or three deaths there, because people were trying to cross where there was no cross, no traffic light and crosswalk. So, that's why we're telling DOT, don't take away the crosswalks and, you know, put in traffic lights, and that's where you have the control. We've never had anyone hit at Kalani High School. It's a crosswalk. I mean, it's a traffic light, it's a crosswalk, people cross, it's hundreds every day. And we're not getting accidents there. People are going too slow.
Thank God. There haven't been. We have had them in what, here in Inahaina? Yes, Janine?
Can we authorize to be reducing the speed on Kalani-on-Aoli Highway? Reducing the speed on Kalani-on-Aoli?
Mr. Abe?
Yes, I can look into that. I can ask our traffic bank to reduce it. But I don't know how that would stop people from speeding, because if they're speeding at 35 miles an hour, reducing it to 30 miles an hour may not.
Well, that's when the enforcement is good, because then you get to have to pay more fines, because it's, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's what you're saying, that it's, this is an enforcement requirement by the police department to enforce the current speed limit. But if, as Ms. Spanger mentioned, there's, they don't want to do it, or they want to do it all the time, we have no control of it, because that's under the city's jurisdiction. We do have areas in Kamhiroin Pro-City where there are traffic signals, plus we have raised crosswalks in between the signalized intersections to help slow down the speed between signalized intersections. And the Coco Head Marina, it's before a signalized intersection. So, again, we're trying to work with the Neighborhood Boards to see how we can help make your neighborhood safer within the requirements or resources that we have right now until the law gets passed, and we can install these automatic speed cameras.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, Lani, I think you wanted to say something? We can't hear you. Can't hear you.
I think speed bumps are a good idea. And yeah, I do want to just emphasize that, you know, there are a lot of accidents on that entrance, right on Kalani-on-Aoli by Kuleo. It's a real problem. And what I think is important for people to know when they're driving down Kalani-on-Aoli, is that they're driving through a neighborhood. And so, our kids are crossing this highway freeway, and are going to the beach, or going to the park, are riding their bike, are jogging. So, this is a real neighborhood. And I don't want to put more of a financial burden on people, but I do think that putting an actual speed bump would actually work. And it's usually by the turns. It's usually like, where people are coming out onto Kalani-on-Aoli, or where there's an intersection, that all of these accidents are happening. And, you know, we've had a boy, young man, die at the intersection of Kuleo Drive and Kalani-on-Aoli, just a few years ago, a couple of years ago. And he was on Kalani-on-Aoli, he got hit. And so, I like the idea of speed bumps.
Okay. Any more questions? Anybody online? Okay, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Abe. All right, moving on to closing announcements. The next regular meeting of the Kuleo-Kalani Eki Neighborhood Board is Wednesday, May 1, 2024, 6:30 PM, at the Inahaina Library and via WebEx. The Olelo is going to be broadcasting this meeting on the third Saturday at 9:00 PM, and the fourth Tuesday at 8:00 AM. Again, so, this, our Neighborhood Board to Olelo recordings will be shown on Olelo the third Saturday at 9:00 PM and fourth Tuesday at 8:00 AM.
Actually, you do also have the YouTube channel for the NCO. Actually, will be, the video will be up probably by Friday. So, you can also watch that.
Thank you, James. And it is 8:30, and we are now adjourned.